I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of August the 3rd, 2017, to order at 6:01 PM. And I'd ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Guzal.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Manager May, he's here. He just disappeared for a minute. Finance Director Parker.
He's here too. He just went for something.
Attorney Zimmanek.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, John.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. The first item on the agenda is our open forum. I do have one request, and I'd ask that if anybody else wants to address the board for something that's not on the agenda, you still have an opportunity to. Deputy Chief has been handing out, I think you are, the open. Is anybody else other than the one I have here for open forum? Okay, then we'll just have the one. And Simon Chen. And I, if this is, just to let you know, if this is the same issue, last time I let you go on for about 15 minutes, so, we have a three-minute rule, so I may have to apply that.
Today I'm coming back, just like you mentioned, because Steve called me, and he got a call from Senator's office regarding public issue, safety issue, and the last board meeting I brought up. So let me be very clear. This is a public safety issue. It's not private issue. Because mosquito is grew up in the wet area. And the people caused intentionally, and caused those wet area. And let me show one picture.
Again, you're talking, you're talking about a wet area on private property between your house and your house.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me show everybody. You can see, this is just water, and the surrounding is water. And those grass even cannot grow up during the sunny summer days. Water is flowed off because it's a slope, and the water just followed the surface, ground surface, and ran down. So mosquito is grew up in those areas. And Steve told me, village has made decision, this is a private issue. And so, first, I want to ask him, what is the evidence for make this kind of issue is a private matter? Because my property is beside this property? I would say, everybody knows. If my neighbor is a fire, if I call 911, does this is a public issue or is a private issue? Neighbor's property grew up mosquito, and it's going to buy whatever people they can. The virus could inject people's body with nyl virus in this area. So this kind of issue is a public or private?
It just.
I want a more investigation, what is the evidence support?
Okay.
Village make this decision is private.
Okay. And, and I appreciate you coming back. This is not something new to the village. This has happened numerous times in Oakwood. Neighbors create a water stoppage or dam, and it's up to them. We had an individual last meeting who has seven homes. They're going to try to go to and get them all to participate. It is a private issue because it's on private property. It's not our job to go to private property and fix it. We'll assist, but we don't fix, and that's just my answer. And you could talk to staff tomorrow. I don't want to get in a debate, but to summarize it, it's private property. We don't enter on private property to do any, even if it's mosquitoes or anything.
Let me ask you one thing. If private property is a fire, I am call 911.
Mr. Chen.
I say, this is private property, this issue is private issue?
Mr. Chen.
Or is a public issue? I want everyone answered.
This is not a forum for trying the actual issue. You've made your comments to the village board now twice, and they've accepted them. And you have that information. You've been in contact with the Public Health Department, Senator Nibo's office, Representative Belloc's office, you've spoke with Trustee Nero. You've communicated this concern, and staff has answered it more than once. So we can't try your issue here at the board meeting. We can accept your comments, but this isn't the place to do this.
Debate it. I shouldn't even answer, but I want to make.
I would say, I'm, I'm not trying to debate here. I'm trying to bring this issue to the board's attention, and I want board and looking into.
And you have.
I would say, my support, my support is, doesn't matter, is private property have the fire or mosquito, because those is threatening public safety. So that's the reason support me be here is a public issue. If board say, hey, this is something happened on a privacy, and we cannot, you know, do anything, I would say this is wrong. Because if private property catch a fire, does village do something, or is a private owner get a bucket of water and put down? It's no. So we have is fire department to address those issue. We have a building inspection department, address the building code issue. So if anything not follow the code, we should address. That is my point. It's not say, private property, we cannot do anything.
We're going to have to ask you. We do address it by fining the residents if they're violating our code. So that's how we address it and have them fix it. So thank you.
You've brought it to their attention, and you've done that. And we have your information, and we understand, you know, your position, but.
Okay, let me go for second request. Do Page County already contact building department, inspection department, and the previous department manager, Nick, he is acting on. And he's gone. Then, the person I talked to, Mike Ramsey, he's acting on. And what happened? People acting on this issue is facing resistance. So finally, it's changed, board, this village board is changed decision. So let me ask him, what kind of force is behind driven this decision change? Before, building department was acting on, it's not say, hey, we don't do anything. Decision being changed by Director Sim behind the force.
I'm going to have to, Mr. Chen, I'm going to have to stop you.
I, I would say, I want asking board looking into it.
I, you know what, you'd addressed it twice. Now we're aware of the situation, and staff's going to provide us information on it. So there's your answer for now. You've got to deal with staff.
I would say, I will email every board member and those, and I am going to continue talk to whatever the department and I can talk to, because this, it is public safety.
If you're right as a citizen to do that.
Exactly.
So thank you.
Be good.
Thank you. Three minutes. All right, that'll close open forum. We're going to move on to reports. And my report's first. Our Sister City update. On August the 14th, right here at 8 o'clock, we are going to have a virtual signing ceremony. You can get here at 7:30. We're actually going to go live, Skyping with our Sister City, and we're going to sign it at that time. So it's a public meeting, everybody's welcome that evening. We've had a trial run, and it'll be right here, there'll be three TVs, so please encourage everybody to come. There's one more concert in the park, at Veterans Memorial Park, and it's Wednesday, August the 9th. And it's right here. They moved them back into the center of town, into our heart of Westmont, so please, go there and attend. And I'll move on to, that's all I have, Clerk Simmski.
I just want to remind everybody, the community garage sales are this weekend, August 4th, 5th, and 6th. We've added the Sunday option for people, so I hope they take advantage of it. And I want to wish a belated birthday to Larry Forsberg. Happy birthday to him.
Hey, Larry.
His birthday was July 25th.
25, only 25.
25, 26.
And to, of course, our Manager May, whose birthday is next Monday.
Yeah, thank you.
Really?
I know, you're thrilled.
No, it wasn't that.
No, we're all good.
And that's all I have. We'll move on to trustees, and I'll start with Trustee Addington.
Couple things tonight, Mayor.
Maybe you should be last, because you keep remembering something after the other trustee.
I know, I won't. I promise not to do that tonight. First thing is, next Tuesday morning, Strategic Plan Team will be meeting here in the room behind me at 10 o'clock. And so anyone who would like to see how that's going, it's moving very well. Larry McIntyre and Manager May have done a good job of bringing, kind of bringing it together. And as you remember, the last time we talked about this, we had talked about synergizing a lot of the different things, because some are tied to each other. So they've kind of done that, and so we're going to go over that, and then, then it'll be decision time for the oversight team to see where we go next, and what we want, and where we work on. So that's 10 o'clock next Tuesday. Anyone who wants to come, you're all invited, and we'll take it from there. The other thing is economic development. We met yesterday morning at 9 o'clock, again, here in the room behind us. We had one presentation. It is for a new property that is being considered at One North Cass, which is just on the other, which is the other side of the tracks over here at Cass and Burlington. It's going to change the face of the downtown. It's a seven-story building. It's going to have retail. It's going to have upscale apartments. I think they were looking at the average rents in the building to be somewhere in the high teens to $2,000. It's going to be, but it is a change for us. We're excited about it. We think that it's another big positive project that will add a lot of value and bring people into our downtown. So their next step that was approved, add economic development, that next step now will be at, as soon as they get everything together, we'll go in front of planning and zoning. So keep watching for that, because as I said, it's, it's a change. The other thing is that we have been working for the last several months on redoing the sign ordinance, making it easier, making it simpler. Jill, do you want to say anything, or should we just mention that that's going to be coming back to, to community development before this board meeting? And then it'll, again, that'll go on to planning and zoning. But, couple of things is, signs were mentioned in 14 or 15 different spots in our ordinances. What, what Jill and Joe have done with this is pulled it all together. It's going to be in one spot. It's going to be easier to understand, and it's going to be a lot easier for, for us to administer. So that's another big change that, that we're working on. Again, it goes along with a lot of the other things we've talked about that we've done over the last several years, which is streamlining, bringing some of the costs down, and making it easy for people who want to talk about these things to do it when they come in. So again, that to me is very important. The last thing is that there was a groundbreaking last week for Laurel BMW. I believe the streets, is the street now closed? Street's closed. On Westmont Drive, they're using one of the buildings over there for their construction site, and they're, they're moving forward. That's going to be a complete redo of that BMW franchise, and they are the number one BMW franchise in the entire Midwest. So a lot of positives there. Again, you'll, you'll hear more as, as it goes along, but they're starting, and you'll see a lot of change there. And we also, we mentioned at the last meeting, that Porsche across the street has also had their groundbreaking, and is working on expanding and tying those two buildings together into a bigger and nicer looking facility. So there is a lot going on, a lot of positives, and we'll just report more as we know about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Guzal.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a finance committee meeting earlier, and we are currently looking at funding options for a new public works facility. We will also be discussing those future funding options at our next finance committee meeting, which will be September 14th at 4 o'clock here in Village Hall. And then I'd also, I believe we do need to wish the clerk a belated happy birthday. So I'd like to wish a.
That's right.
Happy birthday to Jenny as well. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Good job. We don't want to forget Jenny.
We didn't clap for you. We did so much. Trustee Bear, trustee Bear.
Absolutely. For Audrey Cortez.
Trustee Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public works meeting was, I'm sorry, I didn't attend the last meeting, was, was prior to our last meeting, so we'll be meeting in a couple of months. The Richmond Gardens has been promoted at activities at the National Night Out event. The Environmental Improvement Commission is currently working on updates to the village website, and this will assist people with information regarding what can and cannot be recycled. Also, at this point, everyone has received the new waste management garbage cans, and I think we've, are tweaking the, the smaller ones for the people who want them. And then there'll also be fall initiatives, including the pumpkin composting and plant sale will be announced soon, and also the recycling, and all the fun events that come with the Halloween events. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, one last thing, since I wasn't here. I'd like to thank Linda, Trustee Little, and the WSCEC, and all their involvement with the cruise and nights, and the Taste of Westmont was absolutely fabulous this year. And Linda, I saw you working nonstop. Every time I saw somebody working, I thought it was, it had to be you, and, and so again, thank you to all, you and all the staff there.
And even though it's canceled tonight due to weather, we still have the rest of August, and with Fire Truck Night on the 24th, right? Yeah, big night. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Our next public safety committee meeting is August 31st at 4:30 PM here in Village Hall. And I'd like to invite the fire chief up, he's got a few things to chat about.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, Trustee Nero. Yes, just want to remind all our residents that Fire Truck Night's going to be on Thursday, August 24th. Looking to have a lot more vehicles this year. It'll be a fun evening for the kids, bring the kids down, it's a family event. We just finished our last kids camp. We had the highest number of kids we ever had in any one of the camps, I think we had 37 kids. We usually try to stay around 30. We brought a few extra in, but they're doing a great job between the police and fire personnel and doing the kids' camps. Especially want to thank our businesses that step forward and supply the free lunches for the kids for the kids' camps. We make sure we give them credit where credit is due, and we ask the parents to please visit those restaurants and thank them. We, we are also having our 9/11 service this year on Monday, September 11th. It'll be at 500 North Cass at the police fire facility at 6:30 at night. And then we are currently recruiting residents to become emergency management agents, EMA members, or CERT members, Community Emergency Response Team members. If you're interested in either one of those, or both of them, you can call the fire department at 630-981-6400. And then the last thing I have, Mayor, we, last week, Deputy Chief Riley, our accreditation manager, myself, traveled to North Carolina. They go in front of the commission for accreditation. As you know, last year, we were visited for the fourth time, and we got deferred. We had some areas of weaknesses, some things we had to address. I tell you, my staff got together, they regrouped and re-energized themselves, and we went in front of the commission last week, and the commission did approve us for fourth time. So it's 20 years of being an accredited fire department, so that was a great achievement. So what I'd like to do tonight, if Deputy Chief Riley could come up here and the mayor.
First, congratulations, chief.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's all your support that makes this happen, but what we want to do is present to the mayor and the board tonight, the plaque from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, and it's awarded to the Westmont Fire Department. And the commission is dedicated to assisting the fire emergency service agencies throughout the world, achieving excellence through self-assessment and accreditation, order to provide continuous quality improvement, enhancement of service delivered to their communities. Westmont Fire Department have met in full the requirements of the Commission on Fire Accreditation, as witnessed by the team of peers and members of the commission, and has hereby awarded the status of accredited agency. The witness here of the accredited agency award is issued this 28th day of July in the year 2017, and is the president, Randy Bergman. He's the chair and the president of the international committee.
Congratulations. Thank you. Chief, I know this is one of the awards you've received. Can you just mention the ISO rating? And how we rank statewide and nationally?
Sure. And just to finish up with accreditation, there's 239 accredited fire departments across the United States, so we're one of 239. Again, as we talked about our ISO rating, again, last year, we were evaluated, and we fell short of advancing to the next rating, and we went back to work. And in January of this year, we were notified that, that we lowered our rating to an ISO 1. And ISO 1 is the best rating you can get across the country. The commission did confirm while we were there that the Westmont Fire Department is the only part-time fire department to have ISO 1 in accreditation. So that is a great achievement. I applaud you for your support of public safety, not just the fire, but police also. And we wouldn't be able to do those things and achieve those things if it wasn't for your support. So again, thank you.
Well, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an administration committee meeting here earlier, and just to recap real briefly, we had information about the Chamber Banner program, and how that's going on, starting right now. HR department has reported in that they've had three new hires, and a new look to the internal website for the village. The clerk's office is talking about the business licenses that'll be coming up for 2018, and they're working on putting all their materials together. And that's it for that one. The Prostate Center 5K run will be held on September 10th. It's a Sunday on Pasquale Drive. More information will be forthcoming. We are going to have the U.S. Luge Tryouts in Westmont, and on September the 16th and 17th, it's held on Cass Avenue. They're coming back to Westmont because they found that this is the perfect hill to work on. They're coming from Richmond, from 55th Street down toward Richmond. And so details will be available online and in Neighbors Magazine, all about the Luge Tryouts. And that's a lot of, very exciting for us to have him come back to Westmont. And then the last item I have is, we have four more weeks of cruise nights. And I know that tonight got rained out, obvious by the clouds and all this stuff that came down earlier this afternoon, but there's four more weeks of coming out to Thursday night cruise night. So please come out and join us for that. It's a lot of fun, live music, food, a lot of vendors coming out, and the cars are just phenomenal. So you've got to see it to believe it, and there's a lot of people out on the streets every Thursday night. So come join the fun. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we have to congratulate Trustee Barker in getting your second daughter married and out the house, but.
It was relatively easy.
Trustee Barker.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Three things this evening. First off, I wanted to congratulate the police department on their Tuesday night, their, their National Night Out in the park over here at Veterans Park. It was a wonderful, first-time event, and a wonderful event for them. The kids out there with the officers, and the squad cars, and the bounce house and everything. It was really a special night, perfect weather. And, you know, when it rolls around again next year, I encourage, you know, spread the word, it's another great event. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is, there's two meetings coming up. Community Development will meet here August 17th at 4:30 in Village Hall, and then Westmont First will meet August 21st, it's a Monday evening, at 6:00 PM at the Westmont Library. That is all.
Actually, I think because of the sign ordinance information, I think we suggested that we're going to start the CDC at 4:00.
Okay. 4 o'clock.
That's a recommendation, we'll publish it that way.
Yeah. Isn't that, I think that's what we said, Joe, at 4 o'clock, yeah.
So when you miss, they change the timeline.
Yeah. But I miss for a good reason.
No, we talked about that.
You can come at 4:00.
Yeah, that's.
Well, thank you, thank you. All right. We'll move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member want any of those items removed?
Nope.
Seeing that, I'd ask Manager May to read, please.
Short consent agenda this evening, first being village board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of village board meeting held on July 20, 2017. This is followed by finance ordinance number seven, amount of $1,095,142.25. We have two purchase orders. First one is the Illinois EPA, $25,984.86. This represents the semi-annual debt payment for the, well, the IEP loan that we use for the Burlington Avenue water main project. Second purchase order is Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $24,000. It's our participation in the Westmont Auto Mile. The total of both purchase orders and finance ordinance number seven is then $1,145,127.11. Lastly, we have one community event being the 2017 Chicago Prostate Center 5K. Board to consider an ordinance approving the. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests for that event, to be held on September 10th, 2017. First, a community event permit, and second, a live amplified sound permit. Concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second. Nero. Motion made in second. On the question, anybody comments, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. We do not have any unfinished, move on to new business. First item is the appointment to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Now, this is a three-member commission, and we're down a member, and we found somebody we feel will fit in extremely well. So, we're going to consider a motion to accept my appointment of Stella Qualizza. Hope I said that right.
Can we do good?
To the Board of Fire and Police Commission.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Nero. On the question, after we vote, I'd ask for a vote, I'd ask Stella to come up and tell us a little bit about herself, but- Do you want to meet her first before you vote, or do you?
I already know her.
Need a vote.
Yeah, we need to vote, okay. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Stella, do you get an opportunity to come up and tell us about all your volunteering in this community?
My name is Stella Qualizza, and I've lived in Westmont probably since I was eight years old, so that's about twenty years ago. So, I've really enjoyed being involved in a lot of things in Westmont, and with the special events, which is a lot of fun, and the, I went through the Police Academy, and I'm on their board, and I really enjoy that a lot. I want to thank Mayor, I want to thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to serve the community in another way. And Mr. Steve May, and the Commissioners, and the trustees, I thank you very much. I hope I do a good job.
You're going to be great, are you kidding?
That's right.
Welcome. I know how much you're committed to whatever you volunteer for.
Yeah.
I saw you with Linda at the FED every day.
Yeah.
All day.
It was fun, but we had a lot of fun. The Westmont people were great. I've never seen little kids say "thank you" and "please," and come up to us and just "how is your day going?" I didn't know how to answer that. I mean, it was really nice, and see the families, everybody was so happy. So, I enjoyed doing it. I was, it was her co, Linda's co-chair, and we worked really well together, and I think we're probably going to do it again next year, right?
That's welcome. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
New business B, 5809 Western Avenue, annexation and rezoning. Board to consider ordinance approving the following requests from John Griffin for the following. One, annexation requests incorporate the subject lot into the Village of Westmont. And two, a map amendment requests to rezone from R1 Single Family Detached Residence District to R2 Single Family Detached Resident District. And we've got Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Griffin is here tonight requesting annexation approval to incorporate into Westmont, and he's going to be building a new house. The lot is currently in unincorporated DuPage County. When properties are annexed, they receive a default zoning classification of R1, and he is requesting R2, which closely meets our zoning standards. He has an 82-foot wide lot. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval, as does our staff, and I'm available for any questions.
Motion.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second. Little. Motion made in second to approve, as presented. On the question, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Welcome to Westmont.
Yeah, John, glad to have you with us. Side note, looking at the picture here, that closes off, it looks like a two, just two lots that are still unincorporated, but we now completely surround. Do we have to take action on that, or?
We don't have to, actually, you bring up a great topic in general, there's, we have a variety of locations that have surrounded property that if we want to choose to start doing that proactively instead of waiting for the request, we, actually, we could probably talk about that at Community Development.
Okay. I think that's a good idea. I seem to recall we did that once or twice before, and it just happens, and then we just bring them all in at one time.
It's a strategic plan item, too.
Yeah, it is, that's right.
And it is in our boundary map.
Yeah. Good, thank you very much.
Seeing-
No, we're all done. I just, I just threw that extra added thing in.
New business C, 3500 Midwest Road, The Harp Group and FMC Aquatic Opportunities. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from The Harp Group and FMC Aquatic Opportunities at 3500 and 3503 Midwest Road for the auditorium in the PDB3 Plan Development Special Business District. One, revised site and landscaping plan approval, and two, the final plat of subdivision. Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Kaufman and her team, who are all sitting behind me, have been diligently working to get to this point with our staff on a daily and sometimes hourly basis. They've completed their final engineering drawings, and are now requesting approval of their final subdivision plat and revised site and landscaping approval. This will allow the building to be shifted 10 feet to the west, which will provide a larger landscape buffer to the neighbors. As part of this revised approval, there are several elevation changes that were included in your packet, including removing some of the original rooftop screening and changing some of the facade elements. If approved, the following recording of the plat, the applicant can submit for building permits and begin construction. A certificate of occupancy will not be issued until permanent parking sufficient for the hotel and auditorium is approved and constructed. And as you've seen, the apartments are no longer proposed on the parking lot at this time, but they will return to the village for revised approval at a later date. And I'm available for any questions.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second. Barker.
Motion made in second to approve, as presented. Any questions? Would we like Mrs. Kaufman, or should we vote to come up and, let's take a roll call, and I'm going to ask you to come up and say a couple things about it, but if there's no questions, a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Okay. Now, I don't know, Mrs. Kaufman, if you want to say something, it's up to you. I'm sure everybody's anxious to find out when it's going to open.
Yeah. Well, thank you. It's been a little bit of a process, but we're happy that we're here, and we thank you so much for the opportunity. Obviously, we're very excited. We have a few things to still, you know, basically dot our i's and cross our t's before we'll break ground, but you will be invited to a groundbreaking, and we will announce that as soon as we can do that. So, we are hoping to do that fairly quickly, so we can get under roof before winter.
Yeah, there you go.
But there is just a few little things that will get, you know, straightened out first. So, thank you, and we're very excited.
You think you're excited.
And, not only are we excited about it, but I, the whole Midwest area, and I know Larry Forsberg, he's getting calls from downstate, other states, to find out when it's going to open, so they can start planning their events. So, we're excited about it, so, thank you.
Fantastic.
We'll move on to new business D, proposed special service area. Board to consider an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area for properties currently in the Northwestmont Fire Protection District. Chief Weiss, I'm going to look for you to provide any additional information. I know we've been discussing this for a while.
Chief, if you would describe the existing conditions and what we're moving towards, and then we'll touch on the actual SSA.
Okay. We, the county board approved this back July 23rd, I think somewhere around that, for the North Fire District and the village to start working on a special service agreement. This covers all of Liberty Park, Northwest Fire Protection District, and it's about 540 parcels. And so, they're looking to dissolve their paper district and set up a special service agreement with the village.
Manager May, you want to-
Yeah, well, that's the end result. There is a, boundaries of a very specific fire protection district that is its own taxing body. This action will eliminate that entity and then provide the same service, actually at a more equitable cost to the village that's providing the service, and replaces it with a special service area in identical boundaries as what's being served by the district. So, the formation of a special service area, because it's an unincorporated area, requires this cooperation with the county, of which they took action just late last month, and whatever the date was, it might have been that date, but recently. And then, on our end, we need to act, and starting with tonight, our intent to create a special service area for this purpose, and then Johnny has details on that process.
Yeah, so this is the first step, and the second step is to mail out notice to all the affected property owners, publish notice in the newspaper, and hold a public hearing. That's going to be September 14th. Then, there's a 60-day waiting period in which the affected residents can file objections, and if less than 50% file objections, then the village can move forward with passing an ordinance to create the SSA, and then pass a tax levy ordinance that would assess these taxes. Taxes are being phased in over a five-year period, starting in year one at the rate of 0.1753%, and by year five, going up to 0.3334%, and in year six and thereafter, the residents are going to be taxed at the same rate that the village residents are taxed at for fire protection services. So, it's kind of a slow build to get them up there. That's been communicated to the residents. There's going to be an open house, the chief will attend with the residents to answer any questions they may have in advance of the public hearing. And I sent you all an email saying we may have to postpone this because there was some PIN number verification and address verification we needed to do. Turns out, the county has done that work. When I got their resolution, they had listed all of the addresses, researched the PINs, had a nice legal description of the area, so I'm going to attach their attachments to this ordinance, put in the specific tax rates for the first five years. If you vote to approve this, then we'll move forward.
And I do have to say, we're providing that fire protection now.
Yes, and, you know, the, we presented three options to the residents there, and this is the, it was the third option, this is, this is the option that the majority of them selected to go to. And we are going to have a town hall meeting on Wednesday, August 23rd, at 6:30 at night here in the Village Board Room. That's being communicated tonight to their Liberty Parks Association. They're having a meeting at 7:00. So, I'll probably run from here up to there and answer any questions they have. But they're working, their association, Homewards Group are working very close with us, and they are in support, you know, of moving forward.
And before the county even addressed it, they wanted to make sure there was positive support, and they did that.
Right.
And what time on the 23rd?
6:30.
30.
Yeah, here in the boardroom.
And it's been a fire protection district for a really long time.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the village and the Westmont Fire Department's been giving service to North and South Westmont Fire District for over 50 years.
Yeah.
So.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington? I should have let you do this one.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments?
I apologize.
Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business E, General Obligation Bond Series 2017, alternate revenue source. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, which are alternate revenue source, series 2017 of the Village of Westmont, DuPage County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7 million for the purposes of financing the cost of a municipal stormwater management program and public infrastructure, and paying certain costs of issuance of the bonds, and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and the interest of said bonds. And I'll ask Director Parker to add to that.
Sure. So, as we've discussed at prior meetings and at previous committee meetings and at the budget time, this is the opportunity we have to get some funding to be able to do some of these stormwater projects that we've been looking for, for the last couple of years. As the board's well aware, the public was very interested in this, starting back in 2000, well, for a long time, but then they formed the committee back in 2013, the ad hoc committee, which suggested doing some of these major projects and coming up with a revenue stream. Through a series of town hall meetings, it was determined by the residents that the best course of action, the best revenue stream, would be a non-home rule sales tax, which was approved at referendum. We've now had a couple of years with that revenue building up. We've been able to use that money to help start some design projects, some design on some of these projects, and do some of the small projects, but now to be able to do the bigger ticket items, we need to issue bonds. And so, this is this next step in that process. So, we will find out, so assuming that this is approved, then we'll find out our rating next week, and then we'll go out to the market to be able to start issuing bonds. We're hoping to be able to issue bonds probably in August, I think that's the, the plan. So, we should be able to have those funds to be able to start using on some of these larger stormwater issues. One thing I will point out, with the $7 million bond, we're issuing it at what's called bank qualified, which means we get a little bit better of an interest rate, and with that, we're, at the same time as we're passing this, we're committing that we're not going to issue more than $10 million of debt in the calendar year 2017. So, looking forward for the rest of 2017, we're going to be limited and can't issue any other non-taxable debt up to that $10 million limit. So, if we do the whole $7 million bond, we'll have about $3 million left.
And again, this is to tackle some of those major stormwater issues that we have. The only way you can do that is come up with the money. And I know Tom Chapman's here, I don't know if you want to come to answer any questions, you come up to podium. I do have to tell you, yesterday, we had an hour and a half phone interview with bond rating, and Spencer does a tremendous job, where he answered every question, had an answer for it. So, I do have to compliment Spencer on being able to provide all that information.
Well, that's clearly appropriate to mention, because you can tell that the analyst from the rating agency was very impressed at the knowledge and all the information that Spencer had at his fingertips. I will also have to say that Mayor Gunter and Manager May also did a fantastic job in explaining what's been going on in the village here, particularly from an economic development standpoint, pretty much all the projects that Trustee Addington mentioned in his report today were certainly mentioned with the rating agencies. Just a quick history, you are currently rated AA+, and that is the highest rating next to the highest rating. The highest rating is AAA, next category is AA, and there's three categories within that AA category, and you are the highest. So, you're just a smidgen below the AAA. We spent a lot of time on focusing on what's improved since 2013, your last rating, and certainly from a financial standpoint, you have done a yeoman's job in improving your finances and fund balances, as well as the economic development that's been going on here. So, whether we get to the AAA, I don't know. I think we're right on the cusp. There'll be just a minor difference in interest rate because that AA+ is such a high rating, but just to be able to say you're AAA would be really a yeoman's element for all of you.
Hey, we want to get that next bump, let the chief handle it.
Yeah.
He gets all the top ratings.
And right now, the market's been holding in, so from an interest rate standpoint, we expect to do very well when we go into the marketplace here in the next 10 days or so.
And what do you project roughly?
We hope to be in the, in the low threes. Your issue in 13 was right around a 386 yield. We hope to be lower than that, so that's what we anticipate to be. Again, that debt service is anticipated to be around $500,000 a year, which only loses about 35 or 40% of the revenue flow that comes in from the stormwater tax. a lot of coverage for that particular debt service, but also allows you to do smaller projects as you go on, and it's not all tied up to pay debt service.
And that's good, it's going to leave 700, 800,000 annually to do other projects.
That's right.
Do I have a motion?
So move, Guzzo.
Second. Barry.
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments? We weren't kidding, Chief, you've got to help with that one.[1307.87][1307.87](Laughter). Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business F, I don't see McIntyre here, Sister City Program. Board to consider approving the following actions related to the Sister City Program. One, we need two motions for this. One, an ordinance approving a Sister City Agreement with Shinju County, Taiwan. An ordinance amending section 2-33 of the Westmont Code of Ordinance, says to create a Sister City Committee. And again, in order to, Larry.
We did cover this at, you know, the administration committee about the program. This agreement is the formal agreement entering in between the two governmental entities. We won't be executing it tonight. We will, you want to talk about the signing ceremony? Should it be approved?
Sure, and the creation of the agreement actually went back and forth with our counterparts in Shinju County, and we also have a copy of this in Mandarin, and so it's kind of exciting, and so we will actually pre-sign, pending the approval, pre-sign the documents, send them over there, and then they'll have pre-signed documents that will be here, so when we actually do the signing ceremony, we'll be signing them officially and making them...
Formal.
So, looking forward to it, and also within that, we were officially creating the Sister City Committee, which has representation from throughout the community, will meet as needed to map out the agenda and budget for all items related to Sister City.
And when's the ceremony?
It will be August 14, but I did just get a call from Angela, as things are always changing. They're looking to move it up a half hour, but following this conversation, I'll follow up with her, but probably 7:30 on the 14th.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's the actual time to sign, so everybody can be here at 7?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I'm looking at two motions. One, to an ordinance approving the Sister City Agreement. Anybody want to make that?
Motion, motion approved, number one. Nero.
Second. Little.
Motion made in second. Additional questions? Comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
And we need a separate motion to amend our section 2-33.
So move, Little.
Second. Nero.
Motion made in second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion.
Yes. Moving on, IMRF Resolution. Board to consider the following actions related to IMRF participation. This also needs two motions. One, a resolution related to IMRF participation by elected officials, and two, an ordinance related to IMRF participation or an alternate plan for elected officials. And I'm going to turn to Manager May to...
Actually, you're going to...
Trying to cover it, yeah.
Yeah. As you know, elected officials have traditionally participated in the Illinois Municipal League Fund and contributed to that fund. The IMRF now is taking a closer look at the hours necessary to be a participant, so what they want every couple of years is for the village to certify who's actually eligible to participate amongst the elected officials. So, the first resolution specifies that the mayor and clerk, who for sure put in the necessary hours, will continue to participate in IMRF, and the second ordinance allows the elected officials who aren't participating in IMRF to participate in a similar plan, a 457 plan, that's going to have equal contributions by the elected officials and the village as the IMRF plan.
Again, this is IMRF-driven, and the hours, the threshold is 1,000 hours to be eligible.
Annually, right.
Annually. And again, the two positions of the mayor and clerk will be eligible, but in this case, I'm not participating, and I know Jenny is. So, I need two motions. One, the resolution related to IMRF participation by elected officials.
So move, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. Any additional? Roll call, please.
Will you make the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. Second, I need an ordinance related to IMRF participation or an alternate, altered plan for elected officials.
Motion by Addington.
Second by Little.
Motion made second. Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, miscellaneous. We do not have any miscellaneous, and I do have to ask the board if they please allow